Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here at the Tupelo Council Committee, January the 18th. I'd like to say before we get started, we have two of our members that are not here in life, Lieutenant Coach, Mr. Landbrough, I think he may be hooked up soon, and Mrs. Chatham, our secretary is not here tonight, she has to. Y'all will be there on Sunday, we wish y'all Godspeed and hope you're feeling better. In place of this, Mrs. Chatham, we have a very, very talented young lady, Ms. Kim Hannah, who's going to take her place. I'm sure she'll be very good. Well, I'm not real sure that Kim can hear me, but Palmer, we have a second vice president for the House, all members of the Senate and the Senate, can you hear me, man? We will then go to our third man, Mr. Travis Beard, for the confirmation.
Third man, elect. Mr. President, I'd like to confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
We have the most, we have the most, we have the most, all of that. Let me get out of my speaker. We're going with the proclamation, recognition, reports, agenda. We have no proclamation recommended by Mrs. Chatham, no boy or girl scouts tonight. Do you have any employee recommendations, ma'am? All right, we're going now to public recognition, recognition, I'll start with Mrs. Davis.
I would just like to congratulate Lisa Fox, who is seeing the drum major board from the, by Luther King, and then, really, proud citizen of Tupelo, and she's, really, a jewel, she adds a lot of expertise to Tupelo, and she has done excellent jobs at the Oregon Dune Stadium, did it in history, all of these different citizens of Tupelo, and she has really done a lot of work, through the dating young, before she became the communications person by the city, and then later over the Oregon Dune Stadium, so she's done excellent jobs, so she's really an excellent person to give in our community, and I'd like to congratulate her for being that one, the drum major board that she is.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Mr. President, I have two public recognitions. One is Coach James Moody Sloan, longtime coach here in Tupelo, well-known community advocate, used to live in Lawrence Ward, and supporter of the city, and he passed away on Sunday, and just remember him and his family tomorrow on visitation, and on Thursday for the funeral. Also, I want to give a shout out to Alan DeGeez and his daughter for our council TV productions. I've had several comments this past week of people who were watching the production on TV, and said it's been excellent, so shout out to you guys for a good job.
It's good.
Go ahead, Ms. Palmer, I know I'm missing.
Okay, this time, Mayor Lamont.
Thank you, President Palmer. Just an update, we had our district lead winter conference last week, appreciate Councilman Davis, Councilman Beard, and Councilman gentleman pretending of all, with other administration. Just an update, we met with both the House and the Senate delegation, and kind of reiterated our needs for walls from this next session, as far as the hard money and the bond deals, so they are well aware of what we're looking to get, hopefully we'll get everything, but you won't get if you don't ask, and I believe that it would be beneficial if we didn't stay in contact with them, to the council and their citizens, it would really benefit then our city to get some of these projects done. We went over a bunch of financial projects today, and we could definitely use that money for some, if we could get some of those, and get those off our plates, that'd be great, so that's all.
Can I ask one other question, if I remember your good, almost good job in trouble of this summer, Mr. Beard.
Right, not me, I sat across from her. I understand that he was asked to leave, but he wouldn't leave.
We appreciate that, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer, I don't know who he's referring to.
Yes, sir. In this hour of public regulation, open the public agenda, many would, we have no public hearings, we have no appeals, we do have two gentlemen that will be here for our citizens here, I'll first ask Mr. Turner, if he's here, Mr. Turner, if you would come forward. Introduce yourself again, and your best, and you have five minutes.
My name is Matt Alpherturn, singer of the Tupelo Five, that's Houston Street. And what we're here to do tonight, we're trying to do something about violence in our community, too much violence. You know, you go back a few years, obviously it was the most dangerous thing in Tupelo. We spent over four years over cleaning up that neighborhood. We had prayer walks in the community, on our feet, friends, people, police escort, it was that dangerous, but now it's a safe community. We want to make it more, Tupelo to be the most safe and tolerant state of Mississippi that we're working on right now, United Brothers and Sisters. And that's our plan, and we must do something quick about violence, because people getting hurt, they're dying, we also, we got a group of people out there right now, working with parents and students, about bullying in the school. And since we've been doing this, the bullying is down low right now. Bullying can bring on death, we all know that, and I'm anxious to say it for help, about cleaning up the community, we're going from one community to another community, we're cleaning up this area, but concerning violence. And that's our goal, and I'd like to thank members of the United Brothers and Sisters for their support. You know, when we was cleaning up I-Street, I remember this particular pastor from Atlanta Church, he took a bullet out, he passed a church in Honey Town, Pastor Tony Cooperwood, this man passed over 300 miles to help us clean up the neighborhood. There was other pastors, other churches too, involved in Tupelo, but this man, this man described over 300 miles to help us, would be more helpful than people in our community. And how much time do I have now?
About two minutes.
Two minutes.
Almost three minutes.
I'm going to use it quiet. But being around people like y'all tonight, I must be, you know, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jones, Ms. Davis, Mr. Beard, at least, not me, Beard and Palmer, and the mayor also. And Ms. Jones, you've done a great job, and Ms. Davis, you've done a great job. And my daughter, they said, when she grow up, she'll be like me and that Davis, you know. I thought I was worshiping one minute Tupelo, Mississippi. And Ms. Jones, you on your way too. And that's all I have to say tonight. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? The mayor, are there any questions? My time's up.
She's done a great job over on I-Street, at this power over by I-Street.
We cleaned up that area, you know, we, you know, managed it so dangerously, and my brother told me to get a pistol and put me up like Matt Hilton, you know, but I'm trying to get my weapon, this violence, this violence is you, see, it's been you, it's coming from all I have, this is still my weapon, clean up I-Street. And if I had to do it again, I'm ready, I'm going to get another violence, that's what I'm coming. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, good work, appreciate that, thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Charles Moore with the NAACP, Mr. Moore. Thank you, yes, sir.
Charles Moore, 3204 Shonda Circle, in Kansas City. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity, thank you for the work that y'all are already doing, and for the work we're doing on the floor. My name is Charles Moore, my address is 3204 Shonda Circle, Tupelo, Mississippi. I wanted to address some issues, and it's briefly written here in the statement, and I'll pass out to the city officials here. Mayor Todd Jordan and Tupelo City Council members, to ladies and gentlemen, Lee County Tupelo NAACP, Chapter 5, 304, in partnership with the Indivisible Northeast Mississippi, desire to extend their availability to outreach to the city of Tupelo to promote equality and to ensure best practices within the city government. We commit to advocate for the citizens of Tupelo as to ensure, I'm sorry, as to the policies and other decisions that affect our community currently or in the future. We will therefore be actively expressing our concerns and engaging and dialing all the various city leaders and departments on issues and our organizations considered important. We look forward to participating in meaningful and effective communication with the city of Tupelo as we move forward in unison to bridge the gap between the community and enlarge the city government, especially Charles Moore, Lee County Tupelo NAACP, and also Ms. Mary Jane Meadows, Indivisible Northeast Mississippi. With those statements being said, there are a number of issues that I feel sometimes we look over and let it push to the side, based on the makeup of the city and how the government's running. We're just simply saying that we're here, we're at the table, we don't want to cause fuss, we're not here to cause a fuss, but we're here to act to make sure that we are accounted. I think every ward is important, and I've heard specifically that it's been said to me that only, I'm going to worry about my ward, I think that is a detriment to our city, I think it's a disrespect to the honor of the people, the taxpayers of our city, and the citizens that are here. All of us play a part, and a very vital part to our city's growth and to our city's success.
Good evening, I'm Mary Jane Meadows, and I represent over 300 members of the Indivisible Northeast Mississippi Organization. We are a local grassroots progressive organization, and we operate with a larger national network to raise progressive leaders and to be active in local, state, and national government. We had, our group had worked with the NAACP several times over the last year, or two years, and we realized we had some of the same goals, and it's a wonderful way to partner and get to know black, the black community, and our members tend to be mostly white, but we are growing in multi ethnicity and multi heritage. So, we just look forward to being together and expressing concerns jointly, working on projects, whatever might make Tupelo the best city it can be. So that's our interest, and look forward to a fruitful partnership.
You already got about a minute left, if you'd love to use it.
Well, I'll just simply say that I'm particularly doubt that there are more than just me that's in the city that wants change. I think, as I've talked with Mayor Jordan on several occasions, we try to handle things before we get to this point here, but this is a meeting that we definitely wanted to have, and going forward, we are not only asking, we're not necessarily asking, but we're actually part of the paragraph that makes this city grow, we understand this and we know this, so therefore we'll be active here and participating in the growth, continuing, so please don't count us out.
Appreciate y'all being here, I thank you so much. With the House of Republicans, as open the record session, the candidate with item number three, in the matter of approval of events on January 4, any twenty minutes council committee. Move to approve. They have a motion by Mr. Beard, the second on Mr. Decker. As you know.
I just believe we're out of, okay. Liam. Liam, I had to make, I'm sorry, we've been communicating, we have to argue with him for some reason.
Very good, Mr. Thomas, number four, in the matter of bill payment, tonight we have Bill Page, one of thirty, I think Chad will assist to it, Travis, Chad, and myself, under the blocks and all, Tracy Miller and Johnny Chen, do I have motion to accept the bill payment? We have a motion by Mr. Decker, the second on Mr. Johnson, all in favor. As you know, thank you so much. In the matter of advertising promotional items, we have none, so we will skip that item, and go into, in the matter of budget amendment, number four, for fiscal year ending 2022. I'm moving to approve budget amendment number four.
Sir.
A motion by Travis Beard, we have a second on Mr. Chad, I first thought that since Kim was asserting as our secretary of night, that maybe one of your council members would like to explain, so, okay, let me pull that over.
Budget amendment four, as it's to amend to funds, the first fund is to, is the tourism fund, we're not asking to be in tourism, that is transferred 130,000 to other financing uses from the services category, this would be transferred, if you approve, this would be transferred to the capital infrastructure fund, that's 100,000 along with $55,000 from the sports council, and 4,000 from the neighborhood and the lair, those agreements would be added back to building improvements at the Bell Air Center, as well as the sportsplex, to improve restrooms and concession stands, and the powder park, there's a common area improvement, we could take those funds and improve the sportsplex.
Any questions for Ms. Hannah? We have a motion of a second, all in favor. As you know, we're going item number seven, in the matter of closing various bank accounts.
So, when I say move, do we close various bank accounts?
I have a motion, Mr. Beard, second by Chad, and Ms. Hannah.
Yes, I'm proposing to do a little housekeeping, we're asking to close five accounts, that we don't really have a need to separate these funds, we transfer all the money from these funds, we have a way of, through our accounting system, keeping these funds accounted for, so we're asking to close the bank accounts, and this will reduce the banking needs, as you say on the following agenda items, we will be looking at amendments.
Any questions, any discussion? We have a motion of a second, all in favor. As you know, I think the next item, number eight, we ask Mrs. Chad to recuse herself, councilman, you need to explain permission for, for.
I didn't spell out the motion, the kind of reservations.
Okay, thank you. It reads, in a matter of resolution acknowledging the action by Mississippi State Treasurer, a Bank of South Bank as municipal depository for the city of Tupelo, and spreading same upon the minutes. I'm looking at, approve, as it looks. Second, I have a motion by Ms. Davis, second by Travis Beard, Kim Hannah.
Yes, sir. The acknowledgement tonight simply states that the bids were delivered to the state treasurer to allow him to open the bids and review them, and take the selection for us, and he returned these to us last Thursday in time to keep these on the agenda, as our attorney been looking to expedite this hand delivery and then brought them back, so we have got a letter from him, as well as an analysis in the minutes, and that is his selection and his resolution, this acknowledging, so.
Any questions for Ms. Hannah? We have a motion of a second, all in favor. As you know, thank you. We'll now go to item number nine, in the matter of resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief financial officer to enter a depository agreement with the Bank of South, the Bank of South subject to ratification and final call. So move.
Sir.
I have a motion by, Mr. Mary, second by Ms. Davis, Ms. Kim Hannah. Oh, yeah.
The resolution, the top story break is not yet ready, we're still in discussions with the bank, we have until February 1st, so we're asking through this resolution for the authority for the mayor and myself to sign off on the agreement once legal reviews it at the last time, and that will allow us to carry out the contract in time, so it's February 1st, I'm for the February 1st contract date.
Any questions for Ms. Hannah? We're all in. One question, second question.
Thank you.
We have a motion, second, all in favor. As you know. Item number 10, in the matter of resolution authorizing, does Janet need to come back in now? Okay, thank you. Item number 10, in the matter of resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief financial officer to enter a credit card services agreement with, they have served, formerly first out of cooperation, subject to ratification and final call. I believe that we could approve the grant. Second, I have a motion by Ms. Davis, second on Mr. Beard, Ms. Hannah.
This would be basically the same thing, we are asking for the authority to execute this contract once it's ready, depending on legal reviews, but this contract will be for credit card services, it was up under the top story agreement, now we're mainly actually making that a standalone contract.
Any discussion, questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. As you know. Item number 11, in the matter of resolution authorizing the mayor and chief financial officer to enter a carryover depository agreement with Trustmark, subject for ratification and its final call. So move. Second. Ms. Jones, Chad, my thoughts, the country executive, any, Ms. Hannah.
Yes, and this is the last one, related to the top story we made, there will be a carryover phase where our money will actually be split after trying to run down the account. The contract with Trustmark will end January 31st, we are asking to extend that for the carryover period, that contract is not ready for approval, like the other contracts, we're asking for the authority to execute the contract based on being approved, and then, and we're ready back for ratification like the other agreements.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah, any questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. As you know, Chad, you may give Ms. Chad some back. We're now going to item number 12, in the matter of review slash accept planning committee minutes on January 3rd, 2022. Move to accept planning committee minutes. We have a motion by Travis Beard, second by Ms. Chad, all in favor. As you know, thank you. Item number 13, in the matter of review slash approve the development of a way for Clubside Subdivision. I believe that we could approve the development agreement by Clubside Subdivision. Second, I have a motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Travis Beard, Ms. Hannah.
Yes, this is the development agreement for the project that is behind, excuse me, on Cooley Road, on Cooley Road and West Jackson extended, they're behind the Brooks Grocery Market, I just ask that you approve this agreement tonight, so that we can continue this project.
Any questions for Mr. Hannah?
Can I explain what will be done in the relationship to street infrastructure, what it is now?
So, this is just allowing the project to move forward as far as public work and this company, you know, a few weeks ago, the capital approval resulting of that parcel, and so you have some commercial, a commercial development that will take place directly behind the existing market, and then you'll have residential subdivision that will take place behind the commercial subdivision, and so this is just the legality and formality to allow that project to, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Hannah? We have a motion, a second, all in favor. As you know. Item number 14, in the matter of appointment of Daniel Rupert to the Michigan Fair Affairs Committee. So move.
Sir.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, we have a second on Ms. Chad, Mr. Tanner.
Yes, it's an honor to introduce you all to Mr. Dan Rupert, he is before you tonight as a nominee for Michigan Fair Affairs, representing for the five, he comes as a recommendation from President Palmer, and so President Palmer, if you would like to say a few words, announce your opportunity.
Well, I've known Dan for a long time, he's a good friend of mine, he's a very talented person, I must warn you, and I think warning is necessary, he is a ordained Baptist preacher, and he preaches at the Presbyterian Church, and I want to be, you've got to be careful not to sound that, he is a great citizen of Tupelo, and he's going to make a great member of the Michigan Fair Affairs Committee, they have said in the microphone they won't say a word. Not a servant yet, Dan, we're going to.
I'd like to do it. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure for, like, asking me to be a part of, and do the best job I can, and do the best I can to help our city, it can be the best.
Very good question, thank you so much, Dan.
So, we just ask that you approve Mr. Rupert's appointment, so he can begin serving.
Any questions for Hannah or Dan? We have a motion, a second, all in favor, accept it, Mr. Rupert? As you know, thank you very much, boy, thank you, Dan. Item number 20, in the matter of ratification contract for project number two, 16, that clear about, done for, going to prove.
So, they would, the ratification, I'm trying to, Brian, you got our number, Steve 16, real bad.
I have a motion by David, second, Chad Mills, any questions for this? Do you not just try and work there about what's going on, about those improvements and all that stuff?
Yes, sir. This is your highlight on December 7th, last year, the city council approved a warrant this will give to the body, this is going to be awarded, this has been awarded to James A. Hudson Construction, since that time, we've asked them to, you know, payment bond performance bond, you know, party contract, I can sign and execute, you're seeing through the packet, so now, the council will give ratification, you get that from the mayor, city clerk to sign.
Questions for Dennis? We have a motion, second, all in favor. Motion passed, as you know, thank you very much. Item number 16, in the matter of approval of Michigan Fair Affairs Committee Minutes, they sent a third fan, 241. We have a motion by Ms. Chad, the second, Rosie, all in favor. Is that correct?
Change, change.
Item number 17, in the matter of bid for Tupelo 17th Chemical Bid, 2021 041 PR. I'm looking to approve the bid. Travis Beard made a motion, Navy Davis, seconded the motion, Collins. Exactly. Travis Beer made a motion, Mary Davis, seconded the motion. Hannah?
Yes, so we were, we were pleased, we did have a bid opening this morning, and we did have one bidder, and now we assume we were hoping it was gonna be, which was meant to schools. And they came in right when we needed them to be, instead of just asking real approval of mine, so we start getting court.
Questions, comments, or others? We have a motion, second, all the time. As you know, thank you. Item number 18, in the matter of approval of 2022 Mississippi Main Street, M L A.
I believe that we would approve the 2022 Mississippi Main Street, uh, liberal random, I'm saying.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Dennis, a second by Mr. Travis Beer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This email link is entered by Mississippi Main Street Association with downtown Tupelo Main Street Association, and your approval tonight is an agreement for DTMSA, DTMSA's continuation as a Mississippi Main Street Association designated community.
We have any questions for Lucy?
This is a hearing thing.
I would like to say that we have on the top downtown Main Streets in the state of Mississippi, and we know who should bow, and that who's the right to do any small job, continue its progress.
I'm sure we'll all second that. So we have a motion, a second, all the time. Thank you, Lucy, as you know. And 19, in the matter of CDB minutes of January 11, 2022. Move it through.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beer, and we have a second by Mr. Jack Chapman. Don't be rude. Do you need, do you need to recount to your co-adjuncts more?
No, sir, not unless there's any questions, it's worth thinking.
Okay. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, I, we have a motion, a second, all the time. As you know, thank you. Item number 20, in the matter of approval of Bank of South, the bank makes a number in 2021.
Move it through.
I move it through, thank you, sir. Second. I have a motion by Travis, we have a second by Ms. Dennis, all the time. As you know, we're now closing the record session, we have no argument on whether you're getting, we do not have an executive session, and it's my pleasure to say that this is ready to be carried. Everybody has a good.